Because I was paying for the rigs that I had, it was like twenty-one hundred dollars a year for insurance.
Yeah.
For three vehicles and a cab.
Yeah.
And then next year they turned to all four grs. I'm like, yeah, no!
Well, I get, because I'm in the teachers' union, there's a, you've got California casualty and they only do firefighters and, uh, teachers.
Yeah.
And you compare them to a lot of people, they're cheaper, but Farm Bureau was even cheaper.
Oh, yeah.
So I, yeah, when I did that at class time, I called around to all these places and I compared with them and I compared with Farm Bureau. Farm Bureau's hard.
Yeah, as long as you guys can get on their own, because they're not trying to really rip you off.
Yeah.
My even my house was like fifty-five dollars. I was like, yeah, I was like, yeah, no, we're gonna go somewhere else. I'm not doing this.
Yeah, it's like twelve hundred dollars to hit my house, my two cars, and that's full coverage.
I got it. The house, well, I'd rather have the house in it again right now, I got it. How much is that? Twenty-seven hundred.
Taste the shop around.
Yeah. It was gonna be like, wait, what? So this is right now, right, because of insurance, just, yeah, there is, they're definitely.
I said, you're like sixty.
I saved almost two hundred dollars here to pay for the whole.
The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment from January fourteenth and January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second. You already see anything questionable in the bills? Did you get a chance to look at the bills?
I did not.
You'll be giving your iPod here soon. They're, they're working on it.
I'm going to approve the tables for month of January.
Second.
Did you get a chance to look at the, you got the copy of the description?
Yep. Is the audio on? It's pretty hard when you're back here. It's not a microphone.
So then I think the, amendment five, they says that CETA has a staffing shortage, so they're no longer be able to provide a service of labor monitoring. So that's what the amendment to owner engineering agreement to for Keller, so they'll have to take over it, and that shows what they'll be doing and the total compensation on the back page. So do you have any more on this, uh, number like? Any, did Keller sell it without, sorry, still didn't say anything?
Uh, no, he just sent me this and motion. No, he just sent me this.
So is this an additional one point eight million to Keller on top of what they're gonna receive already? Am I reading that right?
That is.
No, it shows the original amount was sixty, so the amended amount is the nineteen seven.
Because I think that was originally sent, was gonna be sent to CETA. So they're just moving prior.
Right, so what's the total compensation? Is that?
I think that's after the I think that's after all of that, but I think. Yeah, but I don't, so I'm assuming that the amendment is just for the nineteen seven?
Yes, that's what I assume.
Is there, does someone say if we could call to get clarification to make sure that it's remending the nineteen seven and not one point eight? Or? Do they have any thoughts?
Not, I'm just saying that they're adding the nineteen seven onto it, and the original was the sixty, which took it to one point seven, and then adding the nineteen.
But we're only amending
for number five.
But I think they're only adding the nineteen seven, which we're, which I'm assuming I don't, but I wish it would have put clarification, it says it was going from CETA to them instead.
So just to go through this line by line, so Republican area will. This is their exact word, the original agreement amount is sixty thousand. Net change for prior amendments one through four, one million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred thirty. This amendment amount, construction phase is nineteen thousand, seven hundred, that's what you're thinking is the amendment number five total of nineteen thousand, seven hundred, so the adjusted agreement amount is one million, eight hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred thirty.
Is he adding the seventy-nine, if you add the sixteen and nineteen seven, it's thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, and that's what takes it up to one point eight.
Right, so it's, it's supposed to add labor monitoring because CETA has staff, staffing shortage to be able to provide the service. And then it just goes on to say, the following services, section A, one oh five, construction phase, for paragraph A, one dot zero five A dot two three dot ADD, the following labor monitoring. Provide labor monitoring services during the construction phase. In accordance with federal funding requirements, this service is anticipated to occur over sixteen months, beginning in March twenty twenty-five, including on a recourse of October twenty twenty-six. But I think the question that we have is, what is the amended total, total amount? Like, is it the one point eight, is it the nineteen seven, is it the sixty? So I think that's what we need to figure out.
Nick, uh, the answer on that is, I'm just looking this over now. You notice on the front page, amendment owner engineering, engineering agreement, amendment number five. Page two in the agreement summary. Uh, original agreement amount, then net change from prior amendments one through four. This amendment, which is number five, is an amendment to the construction phase, the amendment five total. And this is amendment five we're talking about, is the nineteen seven. And so the amendment that is proposed to you is to amend, uh, adding nineteen thousand, seven hundred dollars to the cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
Me good.
I mean, I think we, with CETA not being able to do it, I think we have to go with them so that we can get this through project done.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I'll make a motion to accept the amendment of, oh my gosh, where am I at? Um, amendment number five for nineteen thousand, seven hundred.
I'll second.
So I brought this up, um, I reached out to Express Personnel Lewiston, um, and met with their manager. And they were very, very, um, wise about hiring, and they have lots and lots of talented people. We're not seeing an influx of applications at the moment, and, um, the job requirements are fairly, um, demanding, I would say, they're not just, uh, one of the mill positions, so the, the pay range that we're paying is on the left side, and the pay range that the, um, temporary agency would collect is on the right side. And this is the last resort. I just put it up here so you can approve, um, hiring a temporary person if we need one. In the event that, that we don't get any qualified applicants to be the treasurer.
Yeah, we got one, though, they just want applicants. Well, I wanna support.
Who would oversee this? So the, um, the temporary agency would oversee the employees to begin with. If there's a buyout range on there, so there's a percentage, if they stay for one week, two weeks, three weeks, the percentage goes down, and after seven or twenty hours, if the city's happy with them and they're happy with us, we can just hire them outright and pay no fee. If, um, uh, we immediately like them right away and they wanted to work with us, there's a percent by, to the agency providing them. But it's all explained in the paper that I gave you, so.
Would the temporary have access to the resident's, uh, you know, personal information, and what kind of oversight would there be for them?
They would be just like a regular employee, they would have to enter in data payments, and they would have to, you have, you know, if the treasurer had accounting services, they would be in the budget and doing all those things as well, so.
Are we confident that there'd be oversight on that?
Um, well, any of the, um, it wouldn't be different than a regular employee. But just be somebody who are in the office, filling that position until.
Well, the difference in theory would be who is vetting them, but, you know, obviously, this is our last resort.
Right.
Do you know what kind of protocol they have for vetting or background checks?
Um, I can get it, uh, I can have a manager do a presentation, she's very knowledgeable and, um, yeah, they, they seem very.
I think that'd be great, because I feel more confident that our residents' information is protected, but, you know, I do, I do think that this is probably a route we need to be very serious about exploring.
Well, I, it's probably not really happening, we go to the next city council meeting.
Okay.
And they'll be gone by then, so you might wanna, we could call a special meeting.
I'm looking at that.
Do you have anything to add?
Mark, one thing, uh, typically with, uh, staffing agencies, you don't just take whoever they give you, you still have the opportunity to evaluate them before you let them start working for you. Uh, it's not just a, we're at their mercy to send whoever they are gonna send and we're stuck with it. They send who they think will fit, you can interview and decide if you wanna keep that person, uh, in that position. They can come out for the first interview and you say, this is not who we want, and they'll send out someone else.
Okay, thank you. And I really advocate, Justin, that you are front and center on during those, uh, vetting, when we, when we interview them and look at that.
Okay, yeah, and the other thing is the cost that they are giving us for their services. It does not include benefits and insur, insurance, all of that, so it's just a flat rate, to my understanding, so. I mean, yeah.
All right, I'm glad you tell them the solution, honestly, appreciate it.
So are we, are we gonna go table, are we gonna do, do a special meeting, or?
I would like to come to a special meeting, I think.
Yeah, but then we should know if, you know, Atkins and.
I like this council taking on several.
Yeah, and kind of maybe some of them, whether they wanna sit down or something, I'm passionate for.
But I wanna weigh heavily into what Justin thinks about, I think this would be the one.
So do we wanna look at Keller for next week, because I think we have to have one for the, uh, audit, correct Cindy?
Now, do you want me to share that information now?
Sure.
So, in speaking with the auditor, um, he has requested to have a special meeting, um, executive session meeting with the board, with the council. For nothing more than to, and I'm just gonna read his words so that there's pure clarity for everyone. The scope and the timeline of the audit for FY twenty twenty-four, the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, he wants to be able to just kinda give you a timeline of what we're looking at. There's a couple of factors, and this would be something else you guys wanna consider with even having a temporary person going through the, the personnel. The more people you turn over, the harder the audit gets. Because you have more people that are working within the budget. So he wants to have the conversation with the council about that, talk about, you know, the work that is required and needed. So that's kind of really what the concern is about there. Like I've already told you guys, I'm just not superwoman, that's why I have to resign, because I've got two businesses, it's not because I want to. But I'm not out the door yet, and I'm willing to go through these, this process with you guys, because I wanna make sure the audit's done, done correctly.
We appreciate that.
And I love this community, and that's what I wanna do, it's just running two businesses, and I'm getting older, guys, that's all there is to it. I'm tired.
Uh, when would he like to do a meeting?
He would like to do it Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday this next week, uh, this next week.
Wednesday?
That's fine.
Could we pick another day, please, so I could be here?
Uh, do nineteen?
Uh, Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
At what time we're doing Tuesday? Does seven, uh, someone did seven on Tuesday, seven on Tuesday, so?
Yeah.
So seven on Tuesday?
So that's February seventeenth, is that correct?
Eighteenth.
Oh, okay.
So if you can call Express Personnel.
I will, and just to reiterate, our first preference would probably always be somebody local. If we can get somebody local to apply, then we would consider them, you know, first.
No, I don't wanna rush, I think, I don't wanna rush.
Do we need a motion to?
I'll make a motion to table, uh, I, agenda item number four, for, um, I'll make a date.
Change my office hours.
Mel, does that work better for you?
Um, well, it's just seven o'clock. It's a wasted hour, it's just a wasted, there's nothing, it's zero, it's a wasted hour. So, um.
What time you guys closing now, twelve thirty?
One.
One.
Uh, this was, this was my thought on the thing, um. Sorry, you guys, I've had a sore throat, I'm losing my voice. So office hours for the public, eight to one. Stay basically the same as it is. And then, um, from one to three thirty, lock the door, and whoever is at work, that way there's non-interrupted time to get some things done, to be on the phone, training with Casell, to call if there's a problem, call Casell to be able to fix the problem and not be interrupted. It's really nice to have that quiet hour, and then you could have, that'd be seven and a half hours, four days a week, and then Friday off.
I understand the reasoning, I mean, I do, but I do wonder about the Friday thing, because all the people are gonna take a, treat, like a long weekend, they're gonna take Friday off, that would give them a chance to.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my only, only thought on the.
I like it Monday through Friday, just from a side from having to answer questions where people are. My past experience.
Mark, are you ready, guys, everyone?
Uh, just how much business do you actually get on a Friday? I mean, is it busier or not as busy as other days to just?
You, you never know, but Fridays really aren't very busy, but, I mean, this is all, I mean, that was just an idea, throw it out there.
I like the Fridays too, because that's a lot of time, that's when people's paydays are, and they like to go pay bills and do some stuff, but it's just my personal opinion. I don't know about that, one to three thirty, because that's adding hours.
Well, if you stay.
No, it's thirty hours, it's seven and a half hours.
Yeah.
Four days a week.
I know, but I'm saying if we still keep Fridays and still add that on there.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
I don't, you know, I like the Monday to Friday for sure, and I do appreciate your input, because you're actually in the position, so you have some, the insight. But, and then if the extra hours are needed, we can approve that.
Yeah, we've said that before.
But just Monday to Friday, eight to one. I like eight to noon, but.
I think definitely having some hours for training on the side, um, is needed. And having that quiet time allows for a lot more work to get done. Absolutely, and work, and work involved in.
I don't mind those extra hours being approved, but not being necessarily.
Every day?
Yeah.
Yeah, or if it's just temporary, well, we're training with the person. Well, they have training that they go through all the time, not just training with the person.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they always have extra things they have to do, and, and the interruptions and stuff would be nice. Not to interrupt them.
I'd like to pause for a second and say, let's take a moment and fix this once and for all, I don't wanna keep changing hours.
Yeah, no, I don't either.
I know you guys don't, but, yeah.
Well, thank you for resolution for that.
I think so, yes.
Part of the reason why this was brought onto the agenda, because there was some misconception that this was a resolution, and you guys just had made this motion before. Going back through the minutes, it was just a motion, therefore that's why it was brought up, so you guys could decide if this is gonna be a resolution, and that way it would have been.
That is, that, true.
Okay.
Because it was just a motion that you voted on, someone threw it out there, and it's like, I'm throwing this out there, but so what you ever do decide, then I will type up a resolution, and then that will be a, I'm sorry, I'm broadening. But, yeah.
But the seven to eight, honestly, uh, in the entire time I've been there, we've had three people. And one of them was looking for Justin, one of them just happened to be bringing a payment in, noticed that we were open, so he stopped us and hi. And then somebody was like looking for directions or something.
And you can't do any other trainings or anything during that time anyway, because.
Because we're an hour behind Boise.
Right.
So we're way behind Boise. Six o'clock at their time, so.
But you guys were our test case, thank you.
So what if we did something like, open to the public Monday through Thursday, eight to noon, and then they could go till one on, you know, one to one thirty to have some time, and then shorten the hours to on Friday to compensate for that.
I know, I like the public being able to have Fridays.
No, I mean, shorten the hours, not to one, go to like noon or something like that on Friday, or.
But then you're.
I'm already confused.
Well, if you go eight to noon, if you go eight to noon, Monday through Friday, and then they can stay till one or one thirty to training.
So you want this, the public hours eight to noon, no matter what?
Yeah, then Monday through Thursday, they can just stay till one thirty for training stuff, and then that gives them an hour and a half, we'd have to add a few hours to see what that comes out to, but.
May I say something about that?
Yes.
According to the handbook, you have to have thirty hours to be considered for employee. Anything below that is considered part-time.
So how many, eight to one is what?
Is five hours.
It's only five hours, so.
So it, it would have to be public hours, eight to one, and then they can then stay till two, lock the door at one, have that hour at two.
Well, do you need an hour, do you need two hours, because we could go eight to noon for public and then stay till two, Monday through Thursday, plus? What is that, seven hours? It's six hours.
I'm confused.
Six hours, so six hours, four days a week, would be twenty-four hours, and then if they, oh, that's still short, that's not thirty.
Do you have this, I, I don't think you have to decide tonight, I mean, it's not.
I think you still have to come up with a resolution, right, Tom?
Think about it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to coming up with a mystery and really, because we wanna do this permanently.
Yeah, basically.
The office hours for the public need to be set, so that people can.
Yeah.
And I'd like to be the same.
Be not confused.
Every day.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't math, so, someone tell me what you.
I'll make a motion to table it, and we'll bring up when we can math.
And I say, I'm fast, I encourage the public to give us feedback on it.
When, when we get to the time.
Yeah.
I'll second amendment's.
Edward? Is Edward here? He's sitting here somewhere, Cindy?
Okay, so this was, um, a person who is putting in a manufactured home in Julia. And his contractor, Edward Mixit, was supposed to be here to present the plans for the manufactured home goal floor. So it's an older motor home, mobile home, it is beyond, it's not current within five years. So according to the zoning, it has to be approved by city council in order to be placed. And he was, it's going to have a pitch group, they're going to reside, put new windows in, it's gonna have a garage, everything else meets the planning zoning, it's just the age of the trailer has not.
The electrical, because I think that was one of the topics.
Yeah, they're going to redo the electrical, I mean, the whole entire thing's gonna be on the foundation, uh, have a garage.
You're talking about.
You know, I don't know all the answers, but
Yeah.
I told, they were in a hurry, they wanna get this going, I said, well, the meeting is Tuesday, you know, they'll have to wait now another month, so, because they have time approval to do this, so.
Yeah, I'm fine, as long as, I mean, as long as they have everything up to code.
Do we know what year it is and where's it going?
Eighty-three. It's eighty-three. And it's going, it's BJ Watkins, for those of you who know him. And, um, it's going behind Eric McDowell's house on the, the last Clementon lot that's left. So you can, I, I mean, if you would feel more comfortable having him, I probably would, just for reality, have them.
I would like to maybe see pictures.
He was supposed to have drawings, uh, foundations.
Because I think the last one, they, they had to bring pictures and stuff, and all that stuff, more.
Yeah, so I would feel more comf, I. Yeah, so I would feel more comf, I apologize that he's not here for wasting people's time, but they said they were gonna be here, so.
So there's some things that are not up to code, like the electrical, or you said we're still gonna do that?
Well, electric would be code because that was in seventy.
Yeah, seventy-six was a little.
It changed.
Yeah, but.
But what they're, but the appearance has to be altered, it can't have metal siding or the old windows or any of that, all that's being torn out. It'll be, all be new, it'll be a new foundation. The code says we have to have a garage when you put in a manufactured home now, so they're putting in a garage or carport onto it, but that's just what he told me, I'll let him present it all, and then you guys can decide, but.
I'm fortunate that he's not here.
Yeah, because they're really wanting to get started. It has frontage, it has water sewer access really close, I mean, everything's.
Well, maybe, uh, if they can, we can add it to the special meeting.
Okay.
If they're in a hurry, if, if that's okay with everybody else.
And I would say, because I would like to see stuff too, I mean, I don't think, if everything is up to code and stuff like that, but, yeah.
Yeah.
We're like, oh, cool.
Yeah, the last one.
And that's what they have to prove, that they bring everything up and show you the drawings and all that, and so.
Given that you have a holiday before your next special meeting, the agenda has to be published in sufficient time, so he's got very short time to confirm that anyone's beyond that.
Okay.
So you don't, and if he delays, it's gonna be next month, you can't, uh, willy-nilly add him on later.
Do we need a motion on that one?
Nothing to do. So, uh. Emergency group, do you wanna get up?
You guys.
Is that me?
You're on.
Thank you much. Up here, probably?
Yep.
All right. Well, hello, uh, thank you, guys, don't be, anybody, I'm Steve Riskin, I am the emergency manager of the county, um, disaster services department, and, um, I brought up a few of my, uh, people I've worked with, our team, uh, because I was told you guys had some questions for us, so, uh, I'm here to hopefully answer all the questions you might have. So.
So what's our plan?
Okay, what's your plan for what?
For what, what, what is Julietta's emergency preparedness plan? How do we go with Leighton County?
Okay, well, because we have a number of plans, so I wouldn't be in a queue or anything.
Right, no.
About a year ago, we just updated and got approved our, uh, county wildfire protection plan, has a whole bunch of different projects in there, um, for wildfire protection, to mitigate, uh, different properties around the county and stuff, and we're working on two or three of those right now, that's one plan. Then, we also have, um, every county in the United States has an all hazard mitigation plan, you have to have that plan approved by FEMA and also by IOE on the Idaho Office of Emergency Management, um, has to be updated and approved every five years, or there's a whole bunch of federal grants that you're not eligible for. And currently, Julietta and Kendrick were not part of the plan that the county did in two thousand and twenty, before I got here, I can't really speak to or understand why you weren't part of that plan, but you're not part of that plan.
I can.
And, and people that were here could probably speak to a lot better than I can, but, our new plan is currently underway, our, our current plan expires October twenty-ninth of this year, so, six or eight months or something like that. Uh, our current plan is, we've hired a consulting company, we're writing the plan, we've had a series of meetings, public meetings, of participant meetings, of which Julietta and Kendrick, um, are participants and will be part of that plan, that plan will be submitted in about mid-May, and it takes, um, a month or two to get approved, maybe a little longer with what's going on with FEMA and things now, question?
So let's go back to the fire that we just had.
Okay, which one?
Uh, at, here in.
One.
So as a citizen, what, what a citizen do to, I'm gonna call you, we have a number, we call you, and you kind of give us ideas of where we need to go, what we need to do, is that what the citizens need to know?
Well, that, um, big question, let, let me see if I can give you a little background, the sheriff's office, and Tim Best was gonna be here, but he got called away and couldn't be here, they are the ones that approve and do evacuation notices, and they're the ones that did it last time, they did a great job, and they went house to house and they got people evacuated, so, um, I've got some people here, they have, they're all in different roles and different departments, I'm the emergency manager, I provide support for the first responders, I don't fight fires, I'm not law enforcement, um, but the sheriff's office does evacuation notices and goes door to door and tries to get people evacuated. Mike McManus back there, Mike, raise your hand, um, he is the fire warden for IDL, okay, out of Gary, and they fight for wildfires, so depending on the situation, the fire, that's what he's gonna do. Brian back there, Brian, you might raise your hand, there you go, Brian, he is the fire chief of Saint Mary's and all, and also the fire chief of the rural fire districts, okay, and so he, his mandate is structural protection, so it depends what and where is going on, and then also just, Jason Stokes there is one of our new county commissioners, and he's also the, uh, assistant program manager for our CERT group, CERT is our citizen emergency response team, and we activated them for the Texas Ridge fire, and also for the Gwin fire, for roadblocks and road. And Austin Cole right there is the assistant emergency manager for Leighton County, and also the assistant IT administrator for Leighton County, so, everybody has a different role, um, so I, I can't exactly answer your question, you can certainly call my office, um, if there's a situation going on, and I'm gonna give you the most up-to-date information that I can, um, whether you're, there's evacuations going on here, or here, or go this way, or that way.
So this is information that as a city, the city could post certain numbers, certain websites, things like that to go to, so citizens know what to do in an evacuation?
Yes, exactly, exactly. Currently, a little bit, uh, not exactly, but we have a notification system called Everbridge, which, which all of us are disappointed in its effectiveness, its ease of use, it's kinda clunky, um, we had a meeting before this started about, uh, looking at a couple different alternatives to it, and that's something that we're gonna do, and it would be a lot more up-to-date, Everbridge is an old system, so, that would be part of what you're saying, where you go, how do you get the notification on your cell phone?
Yeah, is there an app that they can download in their area that says, these are the places they can take a camper, they can go to if they need water?
Exactly, I can take my, my big ant, my big animals here.
Right.
Horses, I can take my dog and chickens over here, and I can.
Right.
You did say though, that, that Kendrick and Julietta are participating and would be included.
Absolutely, absolutely. E- every fire department in the county, and every town, city in the county are all participants in this go-around, and will, I would.
So, how do we make sure we're in the next go-around?
Well, that'll be in five, that'll be in two thousand and thirty.
Oh, but I just wanna make sure that we're staying on top of it.
Yeah, you, I mean, if I'm in that role, I'll make sure everybody's involved in it, because I, I don't know what happened last time, but I didn't like it, and I, I got the grease, and I didn't like that either, but I, I promise everybody that would make sure they were all participants this year, where they had every opportunity to be, so, yeah, in two thousand and thirty, we'll go through the same process, we'll, we'll hire a management company, all the, all the details, all the work, because they know, because they deal with FEMA every day, I don't deal with FEMA every day, and it has changed in the last couple of months, what they require and what they're not gonna require, new administration obviously is in, you know, the DEI stuff is tossed out, this stuff is in, you know, so, they're on top of that.
So between now and twenty thirty, is, is there anything you recommend we do to stay in touch with me more, or anything?
Or you can definitely, um, you definitely stay in touch with me more, uh, my office is in Moscow, um, and, um, I'm there Monday through Friday, basically eight to five unless there's a meeting or something going on, um, these other guys, um, Brian and Mike in particular are there all the time, just like, just like I am, unless they have a meeting or something going on or are called away, and those guys are real good, we have a real good team in Leighton County, that's one thing I wanna emphasize, every one of us works for a different entity, Idaho Department of Lands, uh, the city of Moscow, Leighton County, um, the sheriff's office, we're all different entities, but I would say that, we have a very seamless team, none of, none of the four that I just mentioned, none of us report to each other, or, I'm not his boss, he's not my boss, but we're a very seamless team that works real well together, and, um, I thought the Texas fire went pretty well, and I thought the Gwin fire went well for us, um, it was a lot tougher in Espris County and, uh, some of the other towns down there, um, so, but we have a good team, that's what I'm trying to check it, and then, I was going through the different plans that we're working on, um, the last plan that we will update starting in May, when the all hazard plan is finished, is our emergency operation plan, so we'll have all three major plans, um, updated by the end of the, it's another rule that I've been first time in a long time. Now, what you may or may not realize, one of the things I was just, I'm kinda maybe brag on, I guess, um, Leighton County was awarded two FMAGs, Fire Management Assistant Grants, um, they've never, and that's by FEMA, they've never, Leighton County has never ever had an FMAG awarded to them, the odd thing about FMAGs is you have to apply for them while the fire is raging, when the fire's out, or the evacuation order's been rescinded, you're no longer eligible for it, so while those fires were roaring up, you know, Cedar Ridge and Texas Ridge and whatnot, that's when I had to apply for the FMAGs, and we got two of them awarded within ten days, and, and so that, that was a big, that was a good thing that we got done, well, it, what it does is it helps, helps Leighton County, um, with the cost on the fires, of calling out Troy Fire Department, Genesee Fire Department, every, uh, Julietta and Kendrick, it helps us cover those costs, unfortunately, that FEMA money doesn't cover anybody whose house was destroyed, or their fences, or their livestock, or anything like that, but it does make us eligible for post-fire mitigation grants, which are unbelievably complicated, but we're working through a couple of those, and we'll see how they go, uh, one of them, kind of to regress your question, uh, is, um, two trailer-mounted electronic information signs that would say evacuation that way, or this route, or this is in effect, you know, I mean, we've all seen the signs, so we'll see if that goes through the FEMA process, um, I think it will, but we'll see, the other one is a fuel reduction mitigation grant, uh, up by there, kind of across from the IDL office up there.
Well, I would appreciate this, because we had residents that came in concerned that this didn't exist.
I've heard that.
It was actually our fire chief knew all along, he told us, well, told the council about it, said, hey, there is, this is in place, so, I'm grateful that he did know that.
Well, I, you know, thank you, um, you know, I asked these other guys to come, do you have any questions for IDL or for the city of Moscow?
They got a couple.
Chief, or any of these guys, I'm kinda jumping on that one, but.
I have a question for IDL, what, how much participation is there in a fire, like what role did you guys play, for instance, in the Gwin fire?
So the Gwin fire, we, uh, that was a tribal fire, um, that's based upon where it started, um, we participated from the get-go, we had two engines on it, uh, stopped at that whole first night of the twenty-fourth, um, the twenty-fifth, uh, when that fire started, we also put out an additional thirteen in the county, um, so we caught all those ones, um, we knew the wind was coming, we also had the Texas fire at the same time, and we knew the wind was coming, so we were trying to deal with that issue as well. Um, that next day, we saw the activity increasing, we knew what it was, and actually myself drove down here and promptly took over the fire, um, at least as half of it, uh, it was two fires technically, there was a fire across the river that started, um, and they burned together and they became one, that's the Gwin fire. That was IDL district as well, um, that's a, we got a new agreement with the federal government two, two fire seasons ago, and the Gwin fire brought to light some, some issues that we didn't know, uh, just roles, responsibilities, things like that, what historically what was predominantly tribal responsibility, um, will now be changed to state responsibility, um, their jurisdiction stops only on tribal trust ground, not reservation boundary, um, so, our involvement on both sides of the river and within the reservation boundary is gonna change definitely from what it's been in the past, I mean, that's probably since the eighties, I think, um, so, yeah, we're well-involved, we have people on scene from the get-go, and good communication with them, um, and as things escalated, it, we have a larger organization and ability to, to help, and then, when the incident management team that did come in, the complex incident management team, we're at the table with agency administrator, my supervisors, we're, you know, the big thing is, is it comes down to who's paying that bill, and, and we are big, we're paying the lion's share of that as the state, so we made sure private interests, state interests were represented there, uh, and we had state resources, and we were, with our agreements we currently have in place, we were able to roll in probably three to five of the departments within the county, participated at least for, I think, the next two, three shifts after the, the complex team took over, so.
Quick follow-up, and I appreciate what you guys did, and our, our own fire department is nothing short of heroic, do you feel like if the fires we experienced become the, uh, norm rather than exception, are we prepared for that, and can Julietta do anything more to prepare for that?
Yeah, I can, I can put on my, my opinion real quick for you, um, no, we're, we're not prepared, um, we're not, the, the state of Idaho, I can speak to Idaho Department of Lands, we're a pretty lean agency, um, you'll see the last probably five years, we've been really pushing, you know, we're, we're scratching the pond to get three FTEs across the state to grow the program, we're four or five, um, I've been on the districts, which the district covers the majority of Leighton County with some in Espris, um, for sixteen years, we didn't lose a house until two thousand and twenty-one, and now we're losing a structure, eh, at least two to three every year, um, what we were seeing was a ten-acre fire that was maybe on a single parcel, and now we're seeing a ten-acre fire that's on five to seven parcels, just with development and people moving in, um, you know, there's, Steve mentioned the CWPP being updated, the number one project that's been in the CWPP since two thousand and eleven is a rural fire district, either in and around Julietta Kendrick, uh, specifically up, up above Kendrick as well, um, that's an area within the county that doesn't have a rural fire district, um, I know it went to vote twice, um, I know it almost passed, passed once, it sounded like, there's a lot of complex politics there, I get that, uh, but that's something that's, it's different than the rest of the county, you know, you do have wildland fire protection from the state, um, but kinda what Steve alluded to with the different roles and responsibilities, I'm going to utilize wildland tactics to keep the fire out of your structure, that's what we're going to do, but once your structure's on fire, I have three hundred gallons, and I don't have an SCBA, and I can't go in there and put it out, um, so we're gonna do our best to keep it out of your structure, but that's not our, our training and our equipment.
That's where Brian and his group comes in, they're tasked with structure protection, and they work hand-in-hand, they work closely together, but still, there's, you know, different roles and responsibilities for them.
I appreciate that, I'd like to hear from our, our rich farmers and stuff, and kind of look at that, I would love to do that.
I'll, I'll throw one thing out there, um, I live just over, I live in Benoit County, just over Harvard Hill, just barely over the border there, and, um, I'm, uh, I'm one of the fire commissioners for the Yamida Fire District, um, that, I don't know, I guess we've had for fifteen-plus years, I'm just guessing, um, I was part of that initial group that got that going, so if you guys ever have any questions, and it became a taxing district, and some people liked it, and some people didn't, and, you know, um, right now we have a good fire district, so, if you ever have any questions about that any other time, I'd be happy to answer how we made the process work, you know, just throwing that out there. Steve? Yeah?
Uh, I'm Tony Johnson, I'm the county commissioner, new county commissioner.
Tony, I didn't even see you there.
I came in the back door. Jason and I just got back from Boise, I had a Idaho. Jason and I just got back from Boise, had a Idaho Association's county meeting. And at that meeting, we learned that the governor has budgeted $100 million for fire protection for the state of Idaho, and Juliana was specifically called out for what you guys went through. So you are known to stuff here, so that's, I don't know how to get a hold of money if you need it, but we.
Thank you for that, thank you.
You're hiding, Tony.
The Gwin fire has been in every talking point that the governor's had, it's been brought up. It was, it was, Steve mentioned the two, the two FMAGs, we had a bad fire season last year. The last time I talked to I O E M, we were the only two FMAGs in the whole state, so that can tell you.
That's still true.
So still true. So comparatively across the state, those bad ones in and around Stanley, those still were not, there's thresholds you have to hit. Tech, the Texas fire and, and the Gwin fire, we're able to hit those and, and get that, so. It is known, it is a priority. You know, there, I, I kind of wandered off there when you asked me the question on what you can do, but I think a rural fire district or some, of some kind. You know, you've got the nuance that Nessprz County is right across the river there, that's a, that's a delicate balance you're going to have to figure out. There is a Nessprz County Fire Department, they're there, they're not very robust. We, we have a mutual agreement with them, but they, they were not on Gwin fire, I don't remember seeing them. We don't see them very often. Lake Toc County was the, the lion's share of that in and around Juliana. And especially as it moved over into, into Nessprz County, it was still mainly the Lake Toc County, you know, engines and departments.
One more follow-up, since it's experts here, are we in an exceptional danger in the Juliana area, or is this something all of North Idaho, Central Idaho's facing?
I would say you're not unique. I think that the geography that you've got lends yourself to your south-facing slope, you've got steep slopes, and you've got a highway at the bottom of it that's probably the most likely spot to see a, a fire start from accident, what accidental means. And your population's down at the bottom of the canyon too. But you also don't have any timber on this side, so we're really effective at putting out fire in light flashy fuels, we're, we're good there. Especially we have resources and we can get this up there fast. The fire established in timber on the other side of the canyon, on the Nessprz County side, that's a lot more difficult for us, and that's kind of what you saw in Texas. We were really effective on, on the south-facing, the north side of the river. Once it got into the timber and was moving, it's, something has to change for us to get in there, so. There's, and the CWPP has a number of maps in there, that we've run some models and stuff that show risk. That map, I believe, showed Juliana pretty, pretty high, and it was based upon those things. Aspect slope were the two that scored you really high. But not having timber kind of brought, brought you back down a little bit.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, I think I speak for everyone in town, I really appreciate what you guys do and what you guys did.
Yeah, I'll throw one more. Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, are, are you guys familiar with Idaho Firewise? Okay, so Idaho Firewise is an organization, you might know more about it, but.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely speak to it. So that's, if you were looking for, if you were looking for something to tell each landowner, the standard is Idaho Firewise. It's an NFPA certified program. There's an Idaho Firewise group, they've got a website, you can go look at it. But really what it comes down to is the, the state of Idaho is pushing that on the responsibility of taking care of your, your property, your home, your fuels, to the landowner. And it gives you, it's seven easy tips, you know, it's cleaning out your rain gutters, things like that. At the Department of Land, we do home hazard assessments, you can call us, we can come out, take a look at your home, tell you what you need to do to try and make it more defensible. A good talking point is, you know, if we were to get every single engine from the county down here, you could get about 20. I think you guys have significantly more homes than that within Juliana, so you're not going to get the California of one engine at every house. Your house needs to be as defensible and survivable as it can be without something there. So it starts at the home, fuels are, then the next kind of portion of that. Yeah, that, I, that's a great suggestion, it's a good program. There's Firewise communities throughout the state, Lake Toc County does not have one. Interestingly enough, Idaho Firewise is out of Moscow, and so we don't have a Firewise community in Lake Toc County. But yeah, and there's, Steve talked to the, the partnership we've got. I'll be putting on a training for all the departments to participate in, and it'll be in April, is that where we landed on? I think April, to provide the training for the departments to be able to go out and do those home hazard assessments. So right now, I just, I've, I'm getting so many of those calls, and I can only do so much. So we're going to try and train more people to be able to, to be able to do it.
Yeah, we should do it.
So before we let you guys go, do each of you guys have some, like, information that we can put out on our social media page for our citizens? That would be, like, good places for them, like, like the Idaho Firewise?
Idaho Firewise Ready, Set, Go program, it, you're, feel free, our, we've got a whole public information shop from the Department of Land, we're regularly, I think Friday, we have Friday Fire Tips, comes out once a week. So those are all, feel free to retweet that, post it, whatever you.
So if we reach out to you guys individually here, you know, in a day or two, we can get some more information, put something up on our page, that way it's accessible if something happens where they have more information. And we can print it up and put it in our newsletter.
Absolutely. The Idaho Firewise is really solely an educational resource, to give you all sorts of information. And it's, it's a great organization, and we're lucky they're based out of our county. Mike, is there, is there another Firewise down in Boise?
It's the same one, and it's, so it's the same Idaho Firewise, they just have the, they have like a botanical garden down there that they show you, hey, these are the plants that you can, you can landscape with, and it's kind of another arm of it, but the.
Yeah, they do a really good presentation on what you can do with your home, and, you know, all your plants and stuff, how to make it resilient to fires. So they did a presentation for us, I think it was last year, with the Community Emergency Response Team out of Lake Toc, we were based out of Moscow. You know, that's another good place to get information, so we can get you that. They have a, a monthly newsletter that goes out, that gives you, you know, emergency repairness tips, how to repair in a year. So that, that way, in case of another disaster, you guys have some, some tools to rely on to be prepared for it.
Let me throw out my phone number, my office phone number. Obviously, 208-883-2265. So if I don't answer, I'm not in the office, leave me a message, I will get that.
Okay, I will call you, and we'll set up to get some information from you, and then I'll reach out to these other guys and see if we can get something worked out for this.
Okay, we're all, we're all geared up.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming.
Really. Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks for inviting us.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Just wanted to tip that here.
Yeah, if you wanted to be here. How's your heat? I have my coat. I'm going to duck out.
Thank you.
Sit and fight my way through there.
I know. I didn't want to tell, I didn't want to tell people that. As an explorer and stuff. Actually, Richie told me. He said he's still. Justin, it's time to just have him at home. I'd like for you, encourage you to set for another meeting, whether it be the special meeting or the next regular meeting, for consideration. This is something that does need to be moved on. I'd like to be able to have a final report for you at that meeting, so we can give you my recommendation, but I think you guys need to move on one way or the other.
I agree. Thank you.
And the other thing, I would just like to recognize Joe Dodge this evening for helping with all the plowing. Him and Clifford putting a new loader in the fire, the, the fire vehicle. He's been doing all that while we've been plowing, I don't know when he sleeps, but we're putting in a pole, an electrical pole, yesterday, today, we had to go in the pole yard, cut a pole, get a trailer. So I just want to say thank you to him for being supportive of the town and helping everybody all the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys, the roads look great.
Pollen was very heavy.
I also would like to touch on the city roads. We heard you guys out there at nine, 10 o'clock, the night before we got, when it started snowing, and both of you were out throughout the day. You've been out there numerous times, when it's, it's just spitting, you go out there and clean it, put some rock down. It's been amazing. Best year yet.
I'm nervous about our funding for the sewer, to be honest with you. I have been looking at USDA websites, I know nothing, but they're awful on. You can't even look up the rural resources. So I'm going to be trying to investigate that, and I'm going to be asking Kaler Associates about that, when I get a chance.
I have no report.
I have a question on that. Did we receive a notification that our USDA loan is good though?
Oh, are you talking to me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I mean, part of what Mark's question was, we did receive confirmation.
Yes, yeah, we're all good.
Yes, we received confirmation from the USDA that our loan was.
Yeah, you mentioned that in our special, meaning that we were, everything was kosher, I think.
Yeah, everything's falling in, it's, we're, we're good.
So it didn't fall under any law?
No, oh, no, it had enough, yeah. We weren't part of the Trump thing.
Okay, cool.
No, no.
Yeah.
I kind of gave my stuff earlier about the audit, so, okay, thank you.
I'm fine.
Oh, before we leave, I do want to say that we do appreciate both of you ladies being here. And if you were gone before the next meeting, we appreciate it, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Charlie, you got anything?
No, I'm good.
It's like one of those shit bags.
Thanks, you guys, for letting me say something.
Hello, city council and patrons, say following up on facts. I'd ask for Old Main Street to have a determination being a public or private road. Actually, you have already answered. The question was already answered with Kendrick, Juliana, Planning and Zoning Commission. With a prepared and recommended proposed zoning ordinance not be adopted, which you, the mayor, and all the city council members have all done. This was done at a public hearing regarding the proposed Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Meeting held March 12th, 2013, in which the ordinance shall consist of text as well as map identified by the signature of Terry T. Golding, professional land surveyor, and designated as City of Juliana zoning map. The exact map that is on the office wall in here, this picture that I gave you, is only a portion of it. But right in the center of it, there's an arrow, the same as there's quite a few other arrows on there that shows points of interest on that. And what this arrow does, there's only one point, and it goes to one spot. And what that says on that one point is private road past this point. And there is no confusion of where that point is. Now that we've determined the answer, I am ready to sell a piece of property. And there's another piece on here, the last page up, there's a piece of Julie Frye, from Lake Toc County clerk. So that is a city road, and I am on the city road in the city limits. Thank you.
Cynthia and I from Planning Zone, the letter from Julie Frye says that it shows that six mile line on Old Main Street, Juliana, is in the city of Juliana. It does not say specifically it's a city street. To be a city street, the city has to own the right of way and the land underneath the right of way. And in Mr. Smith's lawsuit against Kathy Gross Close, he succeeded in showing that he owned the land right up to Kathy's and a little feet or over where there is no land there that the city owns. Therefore, the end of Old Main Street is a private road, or certainly not a city road anyhow.
I have a question for you guys. My name is Andrea. I live at the Manor. And a couple times a week when we go to take a shower or a bath, we get seen. Water. Shouldn't there be like filters or something wherever the water comes from, so that we're not getting nasty baths? It extends in our hair when we're trying to wash our hair, the tub water is brown. I mean, it's disgusting. So what can be done about this?
Well, for one thing, the Manor had a leak that I brought to the owner, the manager's attention that was not repaired for several months. I finally talked to the tenant of the apartment who had to call the building maintenance manager herself to get the leak fixed in her toilet. And so I suspect that the Manor has many old pipes and rust and things like that. Because the water that the city's putting into the water system is meeting every single state standard that there is.
Is there something residents can do there though, to mitigate that in any way?
If I were to, if you're going to drink it.
Well, what about taking showers and baths? I mean, like I said, we have the waters coming out brown, it's just nasty, it's just, it's not healthy.
It's not going into the water system.
I will look into devices though, that maybe you can put on a shower or something, see what I can find, maybe.
The only other thing that can be done is flushing hydrants, which Joe and I have been doing consistently now. So we can try flushing them at the Manor, but it may flood the parking lot, I don't know, we have to put the water somewhere that it doesn't.
Okay, because it's how those two or three times a week, I, you know, I haven't collected it.
Just test for the water comes in that.
There's probably more that's come out that went down the drain that I didn't collect at the apartment, right in the tub. This is what came out of the tub.
You can collect a bottle, collect it in a bottle, and you can take it to the laboratory for testing, and they can tell it's something what it is. But January brown water is rust, and that would be the pipes in the building.
Great.
There might be devices, we'll see what we can find, okay?
Okay, great, thanks, Mark.
Yes, yes, yes. The pipes at the Manor are very old, and we would get some rust, especially when it's been empty for a while. They get rusty. However, the sand just started, like, in there five years. We have a home that's only seven years old up on Old Main Street, they're getting sand coming out of their shower, but they have a filter. So I don't know if it's something to do with the wet suburbs. I think we have three water sources, I don't know, you're the expert there. But this is new, this isn't, this is, the sand is something kind of new. But we do have old pipes.
Well, we'll definitely check into it. I, I, the only way for sand getting is if the water line is broken and. was broken and in construction, and sand down, that's, that's the only way that sand can get in there.
One of the, some of the, the most daunting tasks and duties I had when I was on council last year seemed to be that my role was to shine a light on the things that this governing body were doing either unlawfully or maybe just incorrectly. It wasn't a funny job if someone had to do it, and I guess that was me. I also quickly learned that I was labeled as an outsider and wasn't very welcomed, but I could live with that. Because when I learned that, it seems to take the outsiders to bring the change. And I, I did, I brought some of that to Julietta. And obviously, I think we all can agree that it takes courage to do the right thing, and when you do what is right, you become unpopular. I can also live with that. Well, allow me to be unpopular once more by bringing something, um, to your attention that has been on my mind for months. And it, it, it's like a minor issue, but it could potentially be a major issue, and I discussed this with Fire Captain Mike McGee as recently as this afternoon. And that is, this chambers here holds, um, public meetings for government agencies, which is all of you. And we have been in violation for many, many years on occupancy in this very small space. So according to Mike McGee and some other folks, there should be some kind of sign or something showing the maximum occupancy for this limited space. And this isn't something I created, these are some other tenants, um, back in October, we were twelve people over the limit. And that, that could potentially be pretty, you know, liable for the city. So I just have kind of a, just a suggestion, it's just merely a suggestion, they go, how can we make this nice little quaint space a little larger? Because there's no way any of you can guess, guest me, on any given meeting, we're gonna have one person here, which sometimes I've been the only person here, or we're gonna have fifty-two people here. So I don't know, maybe we can knock out that wall, and the annex could be part of the chambers, it's just a thought. Um, but I think that's, this is something, a larger venue for these public meetings is something that you all need to seriously consider, as, um, I think this is a potential.
It's been reasons.
So anyway, but thank you, that's it.
Um, I would just like to say that the library building that the city owns will become available, so the city and residents can have input on how that building is used in the future. It is a bigger, it is a bigger space.
Good idea, thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Jesse, I live outside the county, outside the city. But I, I have some curiosity questions, actually, about the Gwin fire in particular. So listening, I don't know if I'm allowed, it's on the agenda, so if I'm allowed to ask them questions, too, um, and get, uh, answers. So the severity of the Gwin fire, right? Uh, we were what, one of two different places everybody didn't have to, right? So in an evacuation order, um, with something like that in this area, would you strongly suggest you listen to evacu- evacuation orders and so on? Or would it, was this area, was Julietta specifically the town in an evacuation order in the map? Okay. So I read on the, on some groups on the City of Julietta's Facebook page, that they were trying to diminish the severity of the fire and trying to, um, not have people worry about the severity of it and, and leave. So that's kind of my concern. But this was an area of concern, right? And people should have immediately evacuated because of the air quality, whether they saw flame coming up their property because of the air quality and so on and so forth, they should have evacuated, correct?
Yes.
Are they allowed to answer?
You can require them to answer, you can ask any question you want. If the public wants to respond, they, they can, it's your time, but.
This is more the first of the fire.
The deputy came to the Manor door to door and asked if I.
I know the sheriff did, but I also want, I know the questions that I saw were in regards to the fire map and the actual boundaries of it, and they were trying to diminish the severity of it by saying people didn't have to evacuate. And actually, they, they attacked the councilwoman, and that was one of the main charges to get her.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
Um, and I, I don't know exactly the situation, but who are they? They're saying they are trying to diminish the situation.
The council, actually. So I, I saw certain people, and actually, the, the woman, Stephanie, uh, specifically had mentioned numerous times that this, it was not a severe act, so nobody should have evacuated. And they actually attacked the councilwoman, Judy here, and used that as one of the reasons to have her taken off of council. I, that's just what I read, so I'm just wondering.
Well, the only, and I'm not privy to everything that went on, um, I just know that so many times the information you see or read on Facebook.
That is a very good point.
I mean, it could be a hundred percent true, it could be a hundred percent wrong.
People should have evacuated, correct?
And you talk about they, and I'm just like, well.
Oh, they is in general, they, the city council, but people to be evacuated, they, the people should have evacuated inside the parameters of that fire zone.
My, my little suggestion would be, Latont County Sheriff's Office has a great Facebook page.
Yeah, they actually.
I would go by their official, whatever they're saying, that's what I'd go by.
Right.
And they are the official, incident command, uh, for this account.
All right, they do.
Thank you. Are we ready to move forward? Anybody else? I make a motion to move an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six, I'm just wanting to know.